I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton's City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, June 1, 2021. The time is 6:30 or 18:30. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
And she is here. She just had to run out to get her glasses.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of your nice states of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. For our audience, those wishing to address City Council under public comments, please sign in at the public speaker, on the public speaker form as you come in. And we will call your name when the time comes up. Okay, you will have three minutes. City Council is not authorized, under Colorado meeting laws, to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issues raised by public comments that are not part of tonight's agenda. Their mayor may refer the matter to the city manager, city attorney for immediate comment. Ah, I think that's good enough. And for the record, Councilmember Milliman did return. Great. All right. Council, you have the agenda in front of you. Any changes? Seeing none. It is approved. Great. We'll get down to item number four, comments and reports. We'll start with the city manager.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney.
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
We make it out of here. All right. We will give Councilmember Milliman a chance to catch her breath. We'll start with Councilmember Driscoll.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Fay.
On June 10th, we are going to have the second Zoom meeting of District 3 citizens. And that's at 6:00, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. That's a Thursday evening. Last time we had 60 people register, so who knows what we'll get this time. To review what it is, it's a chance for citizens to hear about what's going on in Littleton and submit in writing, either before the meeting or during the meeting, their questions or comments, to have those answered. That's all.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Grove.
I just want to welcome the public back to council chambers. It's very exciting to have everybody back here again. Other than that, that's it.
Councilmember Milliman.
I agree. Welcome back. Nice to see everybody's faces, new faces. Just one update. The Housing Task Force will have a joint meeting with Historic Preservation Board on June 21st and with the Planning Commission on June 28th to talk about ULUC. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
No report, Mayor. Thank you. Welcome back to everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Scott. Let's see. For me, I did attend the Memorial Day observation yesterday over at Kitchering Park at the World War II Memorial. Even though the weather was a little damp, it didn't deter a large crowd from appearing, which is always cool. They were there to show respect to our fallen soldiers. It's an incredible event, but it's also sad that every year that I attend this, there's fewer and fewer World War II veterans that attend to show their respect for their brothers that they have lost. And that was pointed out yesterday. The event is an annual event sponsored by the Pat Hanen Post 4666. The post is named after Littleton resident Pat Hanen. Pat Hanen joined the Marines and became a rifleman. Lance Corporal Pat Hanen was killed in action September 4, 1966 in Quanam, Vietnam. Thank you, Pat Hanen, for the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Also, last week, I did attend Town Arts Center. They have reopened. They have a great play going on last week. I think it's still going on this week called Shout. It's really good. If you like 60s music, it's awesome. It's really awesome. It's a great performance. I encourage everybody to support our Littleton Town Arts Center. And with that, we have no citizens' appearance tonight. We'll move down to public comments. As I mentioned, you will have three minutes. We have our list. So thank you. We do have a couple people on there. We'll start with Ms. Erickson. Let the record show that Jeanne Erickson is the first person to give publics comment live.
And hopefully not the last.
There you go.
Good evening, City Council. I am here to ask some questions. Jeanne Erickson, District 1. I'm here to ask some questions regarding the State of the City Breakfast Meeting you are having on June 9th at 7:30 AM at the Wedgewood Event Center located at 8199 South Park Court. The cost of this breakfast meeting is $30. And will, according to the invite, include city council members and other noteworthy guests and speakers. Here are my questions and comments. Since when are we charging citizens to attend city meetings that are attended by our elected city council members? Since when do we have to make a reservation to attend a city meeting? What will the topic of this meeting be? State of the City is very wide open. Many citizens cannot afford to pay $30 to attend a city meeting, and the point is, why should they have to pay anything? I have never paid $30 for a breakfast in my life, nor do I ever plan to do so. What a horrible way to exclude a certain section of Littleton when everyone should be able to attend a meeting regarding Littleton issues without a charge. Is this the way the City of Littleton plans on holding meetings in the future? Paying to attend? Thank you, and rest in peace, Jerry Hill.
Yes, thank you very much. And by the way, the public hearing did open at 6:35. Our next speaker will be Ms. Chaborn. There, we got our three-minute clock working.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Pam Chaborn. I live in District 1, a block and a half from here. And I'm gonna, maybe following up on Jeanne's theme, I'll kind of start with this. It's a 1993 song, None of Us Are Free. And credit Barry Mann, Cynthia Weil, and Brenda Russell. None of us are free. None of us are free. If one of us is in chains, none of us are free. So we need equality and respect in Littleton for all. But I am not seeing that. And Jeanne pointed out a very specific recent instance, instantiation in writing promoted by the city, $30 to listen to State of the City. But I want to talk about a couple other things. So the new council chamber, I'll add these on. I heard the discussion last week that, well, we don't need an overhead projector. It's old technology. I'm going to tell you, that's our choice, not Keith Reister's. We are the public. We come to you. We are going to present to you in the form that is possible and best for us. And I'm going to ask you, council, to direct staff to reverse that decision and replace the overhead projector so that we can bring paper and show it. I'm going to tell you that Frank Atwood and I have used paper in the past. I'm going to tell you that I've waited minutes and minutes and minutes for people with files to be loaded onto the computer. I want the overhead projector. It's simpler and easier. And it gives access to people who want to bring paper. I'm going to also point out, because your friends, the developers, use it, they bring their drawings and put it there. Put the overhead projector back. It is yet another example of staff making decisions or council making decisions that the people, the people should make. I'm also going to talk about the city manager and attorney raises, which are outrageous. For a city our size, these are too high. The proportionate growth is mind-boggling to me. And you're asking, you're saying you want to ask for a sales tax increase in the fall to pay for these raises. It is the wrong optics, and you're very worried about optics. Don't do that. Finally, you guys had like six hours of executive session to discuss this, and there wasn't any data, no data for us to see, for we, the people, to see, for you to spend our money on these large raises in the packet. So that's all I can talk about right now, but for your consideration, council, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Bingham.
Good evening, council, and everybody in the room. I think this is glorious. Here we are back in this council with you folks. We can see nose to nose. It's wonderful. Thank you. And thank you, council and staff, so very much for doing virtual meetings for, Mark tells me, 18 months.
The one technology we have, Paul, is that they're direct mics, so you do need to speak right into them.
This thing?
Yes, sir.
How's that?
Perfect.
I'm going to give you a break. I'm not going to say all that over again.
Well, that's good, because your time, we're not starting it over.
I was trying to tell you all thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciated the virtual meetings, and I appreciate a lot being back in here. And one thing I need to tell you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Velc, Mr., sir, after a zillion, you know what I'm going to say, after a zillion years of speaking up to you, here we are, I'm finally on the same level with you. Yay. Anyway, thank you all.
Do we mute his mic at this point, or? Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, it is 6:42. The public comments are closed. City manager, city attorney, any comment?
Just a couple comments, excuse me. So a couple of people commented on the State of the City. This is an event we haven't held here in this city in quite some time, very common occurrence across the country in multiple cities. This is a special meeting here between the council and our business community, kind of talk about where we're at financially here for that connection. It is, the $30 covers the cost of the breakfast. We are paying for the room, so this is some way for us to kind of, you know, manage the cost here for our citizens. Citizens can attend. There'll be space in the back. They just won't be able to participate in the breakfast itself. So if they want to come in, no problem. Be more than happy to accommodate that. I think we have a lot to share with our business community. We obviously have a commitment and a connection to them that we want to talk about. And especially after coming out of a pandemic, our business community has really been hit hard. And I think it's an opportunity for us to kind of create some goodwill and share our story with them about where we're at. And I think I just would appreciate Paul's comments. I think it's great that we're obviously back in this room. As I've shared before, I do hope to make this public space and to make this available to the public for use beyond just council meetings. And so we've put a lot of thought into that, and I'm hoping for good things here in the future. So with that, Mayor, I think I'm done.
Great. Thank you. City Attorney.
Nothing from the city attorney. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven on our agenda, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Scott, would you like to read them? Mayor Protem, could you go ahead and introduce the two items?
Sure, Mayor. Ordinance, so consent agenda item A, ordinance 11, 2021, and ordinance on first reading, amending Title II, Chapter 10 of the Littleton City Code pertaining to the licensing authority. And consent agenda item B, ID number 21101, motion to approve the May 18th, 2021 hybrid regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
We have a motion in the second by Councilmember Milliman. Council, we're going to do our vote for the first time. Yeah. All right. So just one second here, if you will. We're done with the thumbs, and we're going with the electronics.
We're going to do it for real.
We're going to the 21st century.
I'm happy to call thumbs.
Jerry's got it figured out.
We're going to do it as soon as this thing lets me. Keeps telling me to recall. Not sure why it says recall. Okay, let's just hit that except. Okay. Okay, is it on there yet? Oh, it was? Was it there? Okay, let's try this again. Ready to vote? Is it there? Yeah, okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote. We're voting on the consent agenda items. Great. So everybody voted. I got to look over there. There, Councilmember Fay's up. Okay, ready. I want to close it.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, that was smooth. So do I hit accept at this point or close?
Unclosed.
I didn't do either. Okay, cool. Accept. Just pull the plug. Exactly. All right, we're going to move on to general business. ID number 21-103, Storm Sewer Rate Study Briefing. On this council, we are going to receive a briefing on the outcomes of the water, wastewater and storm drainage rate study. Let's see. We're not going to be taking any action tonight. We're not going to take any action anyway. However, staff will be coming forward here sometime in the near future, looking for support from council or to give some direction from council. So tonight, we're not going to be doing that, but I'll turn it over to city manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So just a couple of comments here before I turn it over to Brent Thompson, our city engineer. But the best management practice for rate studies is to do them about every five to seven years, I think is pretty common. I'm used to five years. It's been about 11 years for us, and we're overdue. The importance of a rate study here is really kind of, really multiple purposes, but in my view, it's mostly about trying to find equity across all the rate payers in a particular utility. You're trying to look for fairness, the best way to allocate costs. And so this is an attempt here this evening to kind of share with you the results of months' worth of work here, looking at our systems, and try to come up with some recommendations. As the mayor said, no action here this evening. Normally, an issue like this would be at a study session, but simply the study session's being dominated by other topics. And so we're taking this opportunity at a regular meeting here to give you this briefing. So you're going to be hearing a recommendation at the end, but we're looking at giving you this information. And then we'll talk through this during the budget process here this summer and fall. We are looking at a phased implementation strategy here to kind of make some of these changes. We know that issues like this can be very controversial, but we do believe that we've got an analysis and a recommendation here that I think will, our public will find acceptable based on the facts that we're trying to deal with here. So again, hopefully in the future, we will do this about every five years, not 11. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brent Thompson, our city engineer, to make some introductions.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, council. Brent Thompson, city engineer. With me tonight have Todd Christiano from Raftellis Financial Consultants and Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. Mark gave a great introduction there. Last rate study was completed in 2006, so like you said, we are definitely overdue. The city has two utility enterprises, the sewer utility enterprise that compromises, accounts for sewer services, both for in-city and as a number of outside connector districts, as well as the jointly owned wastewater treatment plant known as South Platte Renew. The second enterprise that we have is the storm water, or storm drainage enterprise, that accounts for storm drainage, infrastructure, ponds, and flood control structures. Just as a reminder, as enterprises, the revenues needed to support the ongoing maintenance and operations, as well as capital expenditures, come directly from the rate payers. So we embarked on this rate study with main goal to understand operation and maintenance and appropriately fund these utilities going into the future. We're going to take this presentation in three sections tonight. We'll start with the wastewater utility and then pause for questions and discussion, and then move on to the storm drainage enterprise, and then pause for questions and discussion then. And then we will finally conclude with some recommendations and next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Todd.
Excellent. Thank you, Brent. Mayor. Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Todd Christiano with Raftellis Financial Consultants. Thank you for your time tonight. We are the consultant of record for completing this wastewater and storm drainage rate study. You may have noticed in your packet that this does contain a number of slides. I will be as brief as possible. I speak kind of fast, but hopefully you can still understand me. And so tonight, but we'll be going over high level. Then we're going to dive down into the details a little bit of how do we come to our answers and our recommendations. And we're going to show you some numbers and things. And then we'll conclude on, like Brent mentioned, on the billing processes. So let's get started. The agenda, we're going to talk about what the goals and objectives. Obviously, we've already talked about, one of them was to update the water and wastewater financial plan and rates. It's been some time since you've last done that. I want to talk a little bit about the rate study process in terms of, well, how do we get to the results we're going to present in front of you? Was it just, you know, a crystal ball, or what was the type of analysis we had to do? And then we'll dive into the actual results and recommendations for both wastewater and storm drainage. So to give you a high-level overview of the entire presentation for wastewater and storm drainage, I'll tell you this, that we looked at a 10-year financial plan for the wastewater utility, and that included looking at ONM expenses and capital and whatnot. And we concluded that annual revenue adjustments of 5% per year for the 10-year study period would be needed to meet all the requirements and fund $109 million capital program. I'll give you some more detail on that in a moment. When we did our rate alternatives, Mr. Ralph was talking about equity and proportionality. Those are the rate structure alternatives we were hoping to achieve with our rate structure alternatives, is this kind of equity, people paying their fair share for the excuse me, for the services they need. Excuse me. And we'll get into more of the details here in just a moment on that as well. The recommended structure, we came up with a fixed charge plus a volumetric rate. So we'll go into that detail in just a little bit. The recommended alternative out of all three of those was a fixed charge plus a volume rate based on customers' average winter consumption, or AWC. You're going to see that acronym quite a bit, average winter consumption. So if you think of your water usage in December, January, or February, that's what we're looking at. And if you think about that, that's mainly indoor usage, so all that's going back to the treatment plant. Or, it says, or actual, thinking about commercial customers, how their water usage varies throughout the year, and it's just not the wintertime where they may not be contributing sewage, wastewater to the treatment plant. It might be all periods during the year. And finally, we updated the TAP fees. The city assesses TAP fees for new development coming in. Right now, it's just a treatment system development, treatment TAP fee, which means that all new customers, when they buy into the system, they're buying for the treatment plant. However, within the city, there's a large collection system that is being used by customers as well. We've included an alternative TAP fee that includes collection system costs for inside-city customers only. I'll show you those results in a moment. Storm drainage, a 40% revenue adjustment in 2022, that's a continuation of some larger increases in the past to help right the ship and meet those capital improvements over the 10-year study period. 15% in 2023, and then it tapers off to 3% in future years. The city is not alone in larger revenue adjustments. Many communities along the Front Range have been seeing larger revenue adjustments just due to regulations and bringing their storm drainage up to speed. And the 2013 floods is a perfect example of what's kind of triggered that. So the city is certainly not alone in some of these larger revenue adjustments. Rate revenues and grants will fund about $16 million of capital. There's actually more capital in the program, but based on our revenue adjustments, we are funding 16. I'll show you the details on that in a moment. The proposed rate structure, this is a little bit easier than wastewater, that we're going from kind of a fixed charge, a base charge per lot, and we'll look at all that, but based on impervious area on the lot. And again, it gets back to that equity, meaning that you have this much impervious area on this parcel here, you're going to pay X dollars. You have more impervious area, you're going to pay more as a part of your total bill, because it's based on the impervious area, which is a contributor to storm drainage runoff. And for the first time, we've also looked at developing a system development charge, much like the TAP fee in wastewater, for new customers to buy into this storm water system. So we've got a proposed storm drainage SDC. Again, that's new. You do not currently have that. So when we look at developing a rate study, there's a couple of things we need to consider, and that, you have a lot of obligations. You have to fund your operations to keep everything running day to day. You have capital projects, as those large capital projects I just mentioned. You have to maintain your reserves, and you have to fund, help fund growth-related projects, ensure that you're meeting proportionality and equity among the customers. Well, how do we meet all those expenditures or requirements? Well, we do that a couple of ways, by looking at a financial plan, which is what we developed, a cost-of-service analysis, which tells us how we should distribute the cost, rate design, and the system development charges/TAP fees. So a rate study process, at least this rate study process consists of four steps, which are fairly typical, the financial plan slash revenue requirement. What amount of revenue do we need to meet our obligations over the 10-year study period on an annual basis? Is everyone paying their fair share on the cost of service? So how do we determine who pays what proportion of those costs based on the kind of service or level of service they require? How can our rates ensure equity, and this is the rate design, how do we divide those costs up in terms of how we can recover those costs from the customer? And the system development charges, how do we assess an equitable charge to those new customers buying into the system? So that's the four-step process we went through for both wastewater and storm drainage. So the financial plan process, you might be familiar with this, you have a lot of inputs in terms of revenues and expenditures. Go into that. The key thing in here is that what makes it a little more challenging is that you have to balance all these expenditures and revenues with how are you going to fund your capital? How are we going to maintain our reserves? And how are we going to meet our debt service coverage while minimizing the impact to customers, minimizing those revenue adjustments? How do we do that? Well, it's a balancing act, and there's just a relationship between all those three things. And so the whole idea with our analysis is we looked at all these different alternatives to come up with, what's the most optimal financial plan for the city based on the expenditures and based on the obligations you have over the next 10 years? So we developed a number of alternatives to do that, and it's an iterative process. So certainly not, we just enter the data in one, hit F9, and out comes the result. It's an iterative process back and forth. Cost of service tells us, well, we have all of our expenditures for the year, what we need to expend to meet the requirements of the utility. How do we distribute that, those costs to various customer classes? And the customer classes may be residential, or commercial, or multifamily. And then the rate design is, well, And then the rate design is, well, how are we going to recover those costs? We have these costs in all these residential bucket, this multifamily bucket, and this commercial bucket. How are we going to recover these costs from customers? What's the most equitable way to do that? Well, that's a bit of an art and a science, and we'll get to pricing objectives in just a moment. And then TAP fees, finally, we're buying into the systems. We've got these puzzle pieces that are connecting to the system here. How do we make sure that we're recovering the cost to serve that development? Development's not funding operations, and operations is not funding development, and that sort of thing. So how do, how do we, how do we develop those fees? So those are the four basic steps. We followed this for both wastewater and storm water. So I'll pause real quick just on the principles there of what we, what I've talked about, see if there's any questions before I dive into wastewater.
No questions.
Excellent.
No questions.
Great, thank you. So we look at the wastewater utility 10-year CIP. We have two main components, the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system. And again, the collection system benefits the inside-city customers only because the outside districts you serve have their own interceptors and lines to the treatment plant. This is going to be important when we get to cost of service. So we've got a lot of capital within a 10-year period for the treatment plant of about $81.5 million, and we've identified $27.5 million in the collection system. We're going to offset any sort of revenue adjustment and bond issue, I'm sorry, any sort of revenue adjustment by using state loans to fund approximately $22.8 million worth of those projects. And I believe the, the city does have one current state loan for a wastewater treatment plant project right now. Interest rates are great. The requirements to maintain a state loan are very favorable as well, and I'll show you here, here next. When we look at the 10-year CIP, from a graphical point of view, you can see that the, the dollars jump up and down a little bit. For the most part, in terms of a capital program, they're fairly flat. Those are the blue bars. The green bars show us the amount of state loans. You can see the state loans kind of bounce around. And that's how state loans work. If you have a multi-year project, you'll be issued or granted the funding for the entire project, but you only draw down what you need in the year that you're building or constructing in. So that's how we've structured these state loans in terms of the financial plan. That helps level out the revenue adjustments and obviously lower the revenue, level the revenue adjustments of the 5% per year, but also keeps them lower over the time period over cash financing everything. So here's what the operating fund would look like here. We've got a couple of different colors going on. The, the blue bar, or I'm sorry, the blue line is, are your, your operations, operating revenues. And the bars are obviously expenditures. The dark blue is the cash-funded capital net of any state loans you're going to issue. The light green's your annual debt service. And then your O and M expense is the darker green. So what you can see here in the years where the bars are above the green line means we're drawing down reserves. The, the city does have fund reserves right now. And in the years where the bars are below the green bar, it is, they are building up reserves. So in the first couple of years, we're kind of drawing on those reserves we have in place to help cash fund and maintain lower revenue adjustments, but we are issuing some debt going forward. And over time, you'll be able to build those reserves again by the end of the 10-year period. You'll have, you know, reserves that are meeting your targets, but you'll also be set up for the next 10-year period, much like what you are here. Here's what it looks like from a numbers point of view here. I'll point out the total on the far-right column shows the total capital projects of $109 million, and that we're issuing $22.8 million in, in debt. The last two rows, actually, I'm sorry, the, the undesignated reserves, which is the third to the, third to the bottom row, you can see that we have some target reserves we need to meet. And in a few years out there, especially in 2028, we're just meeting those reserve targets, even with a 5% revenue adjustment and by issuing debt. So what we're trying to do is minimize the revenue adjustments, maximize the use of state loan funding, meet our reserve targets without meeting them, over-meeting them, and maintaining debt service coverage requirements as well. So that's the balance. When we look at what we're going to recover from rates in 2022, because that's what these rates are based off of, our rate alternatives are based off 2022, we have to look at, well, what do we need to recover from rates? So on the left-hand side, we have all of our expenditures for 2022, totals $24.4 million capital, debt service, and O and M expense. On the right-hand side, in order to meet that $24.4 million, we have a couple of things. We have some reserves we're drawing down on, we're pulling money out of the bank to draw the, down the reserves. We have some other miscellaneous income that we get. The rest of that, that's going to fund that $24 million is revenue from rates, or $16.6 million. So what this is saying is that our rates that we develop in the examples here need to recover $16.6 million. And in conjunction with the other income and the changes in reserves, you'll be able to meet your annual revenue requirement of $24.4 million. Arrow there. So as we move from the financial plan, we determine, well, how much do we need to recover from rates? And that will, we'll see that in the actual numbers of the rate structures I show you. The wastewater utility cost-of-service analysis, the city provides three basic services. We have the wastewater treatment, or at least we, we send the water to the treatment plant. We have fixed charges, such as billing, customer service, we also have to pay some debt. And we also have sewer collection. So those are the three areas in which we're going to be dumping our, putting our, the revenue requirement into these buckets in order to develop these rates. And just real quick, we talked about how the city provides service to, has collection service and treatment service for inside-city customers, but treatment only for outside-city customers. This is a listing of who gets treatment only with your districts that you serve. Collection and treatment is only the city of Littleton, so they'll pay for both treatment and collection. The rest of these districts surrounding the city will pay treatment only. They have their own collection system to the treatment plant. And this is important because we get into the rates, there's a lot of numbers back and forth, treatment and collection, just treatment, and it can be a little confusing.
I have a question at that point.
Sure.
So when we say collection and treatment, so we're, collection, and the others are not collecting?
I'm sorry?
Are they paying for collection some other way?
They are. So for example, Platte Canyon, they, they maintain their own collection system, and they charge, I believe they charge the customers that the city bills for the treatment, they charge the collection portion on their taxes. So Platte Canyon's in charge of collecting the money for their collection system costs.
So as far as the bill looks, it's not an apples-for-apples type thing?
Right.
It's obviously different.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Anybody else have a question, Wes, since I stopped them?
With regards to Sterling Ranch?
Is your microphone on?
With regards to Sterling Ranch, hi, I'm Kelly. Is that going to impact either way if they, I don't know if they're going to have their own system one day, or, because that's kind of a very far south property or development.
I'll defer to Brent here.
Sterling Ranch currently sends its, its wastewater to the city of Littleton and to the wastewater treatment plant. They have envisioned at some point building their old water reclamation plant. Right now, there are not enough homes online or businesses online to make that viable. So for the meantime, they will continue sending their wastewater to us.
But it could be something, a change in the future?
It could change in the future, yes.
Thank you, Tom.
So looking at this cost-of-service process graphically or from an illustration standpoint, we've got our revenue requirement, that's $16.6 million. We have to determine our costs, which are, do we have treatment costs? Do we have collection costs? Do we have these other fixed charge costs? And then we have to distribute them to city of Littleton, or whether to go to the districts, depending on the level of service they have. And from that, we can then distribute those costs to the various customer classes you have. And for wastewater, you have residential, multifamily, and, and commercial. So that's the basic process, basically slicing, dicing costs to where we can get it down in an equitable manner to residential, multifamily, and commercial. And then the rate design is where we recover those costs in, in a manner that meets certain pricing objectives. So let's talk about pricing objectives. You know, you can develop any sort of number of rate structures. We could have probably developed hundreds of them by throwing darts on the wall. But the best way to do this is to find out what is important to the city in terms of what their rate structure should be doing for the utility and its customers, what best needs, the needs of the customers. So through discussions with staff and this team, we identified five that are relatively important. And this is a qualitative and somewhat quantitative measure as well, but obviously, revenue stability is one of them. The city would obviously like to have a steady revenue stream to, you know, avoid the volatility if something comes up with, with changes in customer demand or whatnot. Equity between classes, that's what we talk about, that the residential class is paying their fair share, and commercials paying their fair share. That's the cost-of-service analysis. Equity within a class is about, well, we have this large customer over here contributing a significant amount of wastewater volume. We want to make sure they're paying their fair share versus a smaller residential home who is only contributing 1,000 or 2,000 gallons a month volume to the treatment plant. That's the equity within a class. Customer understanding, obviously, you want a, a rate structure that is easy to follow, easy to understand, a customer can open their bill, look at how it's calculated, and say, I get this. The last part is equally important on the, on the city's side, is can we implement this? And is it easy to administer? Can we update this on a annual basis? Or do we have to call our billing system person, company every six months and ask them to do something, get charged a lot of money to do that? So those are the five things. And, and so what we have to do is balance those objectives with what's a good structure that's going to meet those objectives? And it is somewhat qualitative and quantitative in, in some respects, but it certainly beats throwing darts on the wall and trying to guess at what kind of structure we should have. So it gave us the framework in which to design these alternatives. So here's the current rate structure for wastewater. We have the three classes on the left, residential, multifamily, commercial. Over across the top, we have inside-city, then we have inside-city within a sanitation district, which I've not mentioned yet, and then we have outside-city. Inside-city within a sanitation district, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brent or Tiffany, but there are some sanitation districts that their district boundaries come within the city limits, and they are, they pay treatment costs only, although they are a district that's kind of inside and outside the city. So those people that are, those customers that are within the city but part of the sanitation district pay just the treatment. So, but anyway, the inside-city rates here on the left, an inside-city of, we have a, it's a dollar per unit or dollar per bill for single-family. Multifamily's a per-unit. So if you have a 10-unit complex, you're going to pay $2,400 for that bill because it's per-unit. And then commercial is $5.18 per thousand gallons. And that, for inside-city, that's both treatment and collection costs combined. I'll move to the outside-city. You can see the outside-city costs are lower because they're only paying treatment-related costs. Again, the, the multifamily is a per-unit basis, so the number of units on the property, multiply those units times that per-unit charge, you get the total bill. And commercial is $2.82 per thousand gallons, which is less than the $5.18 because they pay for treatment costs only. So that's the current structure. So regardless of how much volume single-family and multifamily contributes, you're paying the same amount. And that was one of the challenges. That was one of the pricing objectives we had, was the equity within a class and also equity between the classes. So the, we came up with three alternatives, and we obviously benchmarked our, our rate structures against the baseline. So we did update the existing structure with the new numbers. And we kept everything the same, the annual fixed charge per unit or per bill for residential, the annual fixed charge per unit for multifamily, and the volume rate applied to billable volume for commercial. Now, what's interesting about this existing rate structure and this, and our baseline update, is the commercial volume rate is applied to the lowest bimonthly volume in a 12-month period. So when the city gets the billing data from Denver Water and the other districts and starts compiling all that information, they look at the two consecutive months that have the lowest volume, and that's what the commercial customers are billed on, is lowest, it's called lowest bimonthly volume. We have an alternative that includes that. So, but that only applies to commercial in this existing rate structure baseline scenario here. So here are the real alternatives, the new ones we came up with. Alternative one is lowest bimonthly, but it applies to everybody. So residential, we would look at the billing for residential and customers, look at their bill, and find the two, find the two lowest, the lowest bimonthly bill periods, and their annual bill will be based on that times six, because they, it's bimonthly times six gets the annual bill. And that would apply to residential, multifamily, and commercial. They would all be assessed a fixed charge as well. Alternative two, instead of being on the lowest bimonthly, it's based off of average winter consumption, meaning we're looking at January through March consumption, dividing by three, saying, here's your average winter consumption, and we apply the, the rate in a very similar manner, which the average winter consumption is very common among, among utilities. Alternative three is AWC and actual. So what we're doing here is for residential, multifamily, we are retaining the AWC basis for billing the billable volume component of it, but on commercial side, we're billing actual volume because winter volume in commercial doesn't necessarily mean that that's what they're sending on average to the treatment plant. There's a process, they might have processes that go throughout the year. You think of a restaurant or other places like that that have contributed volume that vary throughout the year. Again, it gets back to looking at the equity between the classes and within a class. So those are the three alternatives we came up with. So we're going to look at some numbers here. Here's the proposed rates based on our $16.6 million revenue requirement, that's the amount of revenue we need to recover, under the existing structure. And you can see here, we have the description of the various customer classes, where they're located, the level of service. We have a fixed charge, and we have a minimum charge, and we have a volume rate. So under the fixed charge, just like the existing structure, it's dollars per bill or dollars per unit, regardless of the flow that's contributed. And that applies to inside sanitation districts and outside. We have a minimum charge for commercial, I didn't mention that earlier, but there is a minimum charge in commercial that if their annual usage is below a certain threshold, they just get charged a flat amount. It's not many, so, but we replicated that here. The volume rate is just applied to commercial because we are looking at the existing structure, and it's $8.14 per thousand gallons based on the lowest bimonthly, and it's $5.08 for outside-city for treatment only, lowest bimonthly. So that's the existing structure. That's what the rates look like for the existing structure. Lowest bimonthly, again, a lot of numbers here on the left-hand side. You can see the inside-city, the sanitation district, and outside-city with the various customer classes. You see volume charge across the top there for treatment, collection, and total. I'll just direct your eyes towards the total column. You can see that inside-city is $7.39, and for outside is $4.31. Well, A, why is it the same for single-family, multifamily, and commercial? Well, that is that, for the most part, these customers are contributing the same strength volume, the same BOD and TSS, they call it, basically the, the organic material in the wastewater, they're all contributing about the same concentration of that, and that's why that's the same of $7.39. But more importantly, that $7.39 is greater than the $4.31 because the $7.39 includes both the treatment and the collection. And the outside-city, the $4.31 is just a, a collection, I'm sorry, treatment only. Now I'm confusing myself. The last column shows the base charge, $38.71 for single-family, and it's the same for inside-city as it is outside-city because it takes the same amount of money to send a bill out inside the city, whether you're inside the city or outside the city. You'll notice that multifamily is lower, and that is because we've taken the costs associated with multifamily and divided by the number of units. And because the number of units is different than the actual number of bills, there's more units than there are bills for multifamily, hence the lower $24.69. So that's alternative one, lowest bimonthly. You'll notice some things on alternative two and alternative three here. Whoops, there we go. Alternative two, same setup, but the volume rates start going down a little bit. And that's because the lowest bimonthly is the lowest possible value we can get out of these three alternatives. So AWC, those numbers are a little higher, so the volume rate comes down. Again, inside-city of $6.16 is greater than the outside-city of $3.83. Fixed charges don't change, same con, same cost-related regardless of, of volume contributed. Alternative three is the AWC and actual. And you can see that the, the total volumetric rate for inside-city is a little closer to the outside-city, I'm sorry, the, the commercial rate is still the same as multifamily and single-family here, but it's still based off of actual winter volume. So, and again, outside-city, $3.06 is lower because of the, the treatment only. So those are the three alternatives. The main difference between them is the volume we're basing their bill on. Is it the lowest bimonthly? Is it average winter consumption? Or is it actual for commercial? That's the really big decision. And in terms of an equity scale, as you get to customer equity, on the one hand, the lowest bimonthly, and the actual... lowest bimonthly, and the actual winter consumption, average winter consumption and actual is probably a little more equitable than the lowest bimonthly. So here, let's look at a couple of alternatives here. I'm sorry, not alternatives, the bill comparison, I apologize. So here's a residential rate using 48,000 gallons billed annually. And each one of those bars represents the existing structure, but also the four options, the one existing structure under the current 2022 revenue requirement, as well as the three alternatives. And you can see that the lowest bimonthly results in the highest bill for residential customer. And it follows the same pattern on outside city as well. And looking at commercial, we see a jump as well. The existing structure, the volumetric rate for lowest bimonthly for commercial is the highest out of the three alternatives. They've, for this example, of 180,000 gallons here. So let's see how that compares really to the real world and other communities around the city of Littleton. So here's a bunch of, we've got a lot of utilities up here. The gray bars represent the existing, but also the alternatives. You can see that they all hover in this middle section of the various communities we've surveyed. Parker and Arapahoe County are the highest. That's, that's the way it is for water and sewer for them. But even with the large changes in the volumetric rate for these alternatives, they still stay relatively close to one another in comparison to the other communities. And one thing is, we're looking at fiscal year 2022 potential rates. These are all fiscal year '21 rates for everybody else. We don't know what Centennial or Loveland is doing next year yet. They might have a 30% revenue adjustment. We don't know. So it is a little bit of apples to oranges, but it's the best comparison we have. Here's commercial. Under the existing structure, the bimonthly, you can see that's the highest of the two. Otherwise, the more preferred alternative, the actual, that far bottom gray line is going to be lowest among all of the different alternatives there. So I'm going to pause right there for, that's wastewater rates and those proposed alternatives.
All that sync right in, council?
[laughing]
Our TV ratings just went down, by the way.
Oh, geez.
Jared?
Driscoll? Yes. Why wouldn't we just, you know, choose the Littleton AMC, the average monthly consumption? It seems to me that's, is there...
Are you referring to average winter consumption?
I'm sorry?
You're referring, you said average monthly consumption?
Yes.
Over the AWC or the actual consumption?
I'm looking at the AWC actual.
Oh, AWC actual. Why wouldn't you choose that?
Right.
Well, actually, that's the preferred alternative.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thanks. So one of the, one of the numbers that we have to pay attention to when we're considering which of these rate structures is most appropriate is the future capital needs of South Platte Renew. If that hasn't come before, council, who is picking that number? And what's it based on? And why should we have faith in it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd be happy to answer that question. It's a great question, actually. Here in July...
Is your mic upon?
No, I thought I did that. There we go. Sorry. You know, myself and Keith Reister, the Public Works Director, sit on the Supervisory Committee for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. And we have an annual meeting now that's scheduled for, I think, the third week of July. And that's the opportunity for the two councils to come together and actually look at the proposed budget here for the wastewater treatment plant. And this is one of the central costs for any utility is treatment. And so there is a long history of how we've tried to manage the future costs, the capital investment at the wastewater treatment plant. And so you're going to see a presentation about what is that forecast for the next 10 years. And in my opinion, here in the last couple of years, we've brought on some new staff that has been able to kind of look at this issue a little bit differently. In fact, you know, we have kind of this program going on with the state that if we have certain levels that are lower than the current discharge permit, then we get credit. So that we, in essence, prolong the improvement that's necessary out into the future. And that is a big deal. That is new for us. And so I think that has helped this rate structure question here. And so I think one of the things you'll hear again in July is kind of the strategy and a little bit of confidence, in essence, in this forecast for the capital. Now, to me, one of the more important things is the rate structure itself. Every year, we look at our expenditures and our revenues. And there's always this annual decision about what is the increase that council will make to a utility cost. So while we make a forecast here for 10 years, in the end, it's an annual decision, making sure that all our revenues and expenditures, the model that we've developed, is on target. And as, as we stated early in this discussion here, we're looking for not only just the best structure to kind of balance all these revenues and expenditures, but we're trying to have the lowest cost for our customers. That's the balance we're trying to strike. And so I think that's, in my opinion, the confidence we should have is the structure itself, is there equity? And then for us to kind of monitor that thing every single year to make sure we're hitting the target.
Thank you. Todd?
Okay. Okay, we've gone through the wastewater rates. We'll talk about wastewater tap fees. This actually is a little more complex than it sounds, just by simply updating, because we are adding this proposed additional component for the collection system tap fee. Wastewater tap fee update. So tap fees are one-time, one-time fee assessed to new development that's coming in or incremental development. There is a Colorado State statute that requires that you, those tap fees adhere to certain requirements. Within the statute, that essentially it's not being used for operations, and it's used to defray the cost of growth-related capital, and needs to be directly related to the services providing. There needs to be this rational nexus between the cost you're paying and the benefit you're getting from that tap fee. And I have a note down here, the city's tap fee currently only recovers treatment capacity costs right now. So when people pay a tap fee today, they're paying into their portion of the treatment plant. So here's how it's calculated. We look at the value of the treatment plant facilities in today's dollars. We look at any sort of capital projects to serve future growth. We know the city's proportionate share of capacity in the plant. We can take A divided by B, and we get a unit cost. We multiply that unit cost times the demand requirement of a 3/4-inch meter, and we come up with an SDC. That's just kind of the details and the black box behind calculating a tap fee. And that's the approach we used here. So here is the exist, the current and the proposed tap fee. The current tap fee for residential, and I'll just stay on residential, but you can look at the other commercial larger meter sizes down below. The current fee is $5,000. Our proposed fee is $4,200, a slight decrease in that fee. Looking into that, we had, we examined this, and we said, well, we're not charging a collection system fee, and maybe we should be. So what we've done is, we've added that into the fee here to increase this 4,204. So what we did is, we looked, just like the treatment plant, we looked at the value of the collection system and the capacity and all that sort of thing to come up with a cost for that. And so we, I'll flip back here, the 4,204, which is the proposed tap fee for wastewater treatment, the sewer collection portion of that fee is $757 based on our calculations, to come up with a total fee of 4,961, which is still less than the current treatment plant only fee. So that's, when we did that analysis, we saw coming up a little bit lower. And again, this 4,961 would only apply to inside city. So let's look at a comparison of the current fees for inside city to the proposed fees with collection system costs. We're $39 lower than the current fee right now. And that obviously scales up with larger commercial meter sizes. Now, here's a comparison of inside city treatment plant fee plus the collection system fee compared to the outside city proposed treatment plant fee. So we're kind of comparing little apples, apples to oranges here, but this is what it would look like on the ordinance if you were to adopt this. 4,961 for inside city and 4,750 for outside city treatment only. The reason those numbers are so close is that the outside city tap fee does have a 13% multiplier on it. So if we think about the existing tap fee for inside city is $5,000, the outside city tap fee right now is 5,650 for outside city. But, so, this is just showing the inside city proposed tap fee with collection compared to the outside city treatment only fee. It's, it can be a little confusing because we're adding different components here, but we did want to include that collection system fee portion of $757 into the total inside city tap fee.
Question?
Yeah.
So what is the, is that the pipe measurements? Or what is that? Three inches, six inches?
Oh, I'm sorry. Those are the, great question. Those are the meters, the water meter sizes. A lot, many tap fees are, for water and sewer, tap fees, obviously on water, based off of water meter size. But the same goes for wastewater. They base it off of wastewater, they base it off of the water meter size as well. It's a simplicity thing. But it still denotes that with a larger water meter size, there's larger water capacity, which could infers the larger potential capacity to the treatment plant. So that's, that's the relationship there. It's fairly common. But it's, this is a, based on the water meter size.
Is that true for multifamily as well?
Multifamily is based on per unit. You can see it's cut off there. It should say per unit. So it's independent of meter size.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, that wasn't clear. All right, residential tap fees. We've got a couple of different colored bars here. We have a number of communities. You see Arapahoe County at the top and all these other players in the middle here. The light blue, I'm just calling other infrastructure because with some of these tap fees, we don't know what they've included in it. We know it's a sewer tap fee, but we don't know exactly what's in it. To the extent we can, we've included, if we can identify the treatment component of a tap fee, we've highlighted here with that darker blue. And to the extent we can have, we can identify collection system costs with the tap fee, be it the city or others, we have done that as well. So if you look at the city of Inglewood, they charge both a treatment tap fee and a collection tap fee for a total of $2,370. The city of Denver charges $4,960. And a small part of that has other infrastructure, which is probably collection. But the big, big portion of that is the payment to Metro, just like South Platte Renew here. Denver and other communities surrounding Denver pay a tap fee to Metro for treatment. So that's, that's why that is. But, and you can see here that the Littleton existing is $5,000, and the proposed Littleton treatment only is 4,204, which is just below Denver and kind of in the middle of the, of the graph there. Again, that's 2022 proposed. We don't know what these other communities are going to do for 2022. These fees might go up, they might go down. We just don't know yet. So that gives you an indication of where you'd fall along that comparison of other communities. I'll pause on the tap fees real quick, see if there's any questions.
Any questions? Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just a quick comment here. Again, I know this is a lot of information here, and we don't expect you to kind of master this here in one setting here. So that's why we have kind of this recommendation at the end here. We're going to talk through this during the budget process as well here for both, both utilities. Just want to emphasize that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this is a bit of a naive question, but I'm going to let it rip. So we co-own this, obviously, with Inglewood. We co-own South Platte Renew. How historically have the districts been allocated between the two cities? And why don't we have to collaborate with, with the city of Inglewood when it comes to rate setting?
Well, let's see. It's a very interesting question.
Good question.
Couple of years ago, I had to write a letter to the city of Inglewood raising some concerns about how they were potentially managing some of the costs associated with their utility, in essence, whether or not they're going to meet their obligation here for the improvements to the plant. So the collaboration, you know, I can't speak to the history, but I think here in the last couple of years, it's definitely changed to where we are looking at sharing some information so that I, certainly as a city manager, have more confidence that they're going to meet that obligation. It's a heavy obligation, the investment in a wastewater treatment. My, apologize. Hope I don't have to start again. So I think it's the, each utility's a little different. So the treatment is one piece here where I think now, between the two cities, we have a better understanding of what it's going to take to meet that obligation. The collection systems are very different. And so that cost is a decision that each city council makes on its own, its level of investment. And so the question is, you know, for us is, what is that infrastructure? And what is the best management practice to kind of take on that infrastructure over time? And since I've been here, and certainly Keith Reister is the Public Works Utilities Director, and even Brent Thompson, certainly, we've been looking at an asset management system to better understand, what is it we've got? What is the level of service that we've been providing? And so that is our new decision that we've been making in the last few years, is what is that level of investment into the collection? Perhaps something we hadn't been doing historically. And so that has fed into the, into the discussion. So we've been also sharing that conversation with the city of Inglewood. So they are having similar conversations on their collection system. But again, they're two unique assets. Hope that helps.
Just, I guess, a quick follow-up. Why, for example, are we setting the rate for Beaumar and not Inglewood? I mean, why is Inglewood not setting the rate for Beaumar? Why are we doing that? Why are we setting it for South Platte? Why are they not doing that? I'm curious why the districts have sort of been allocated the way they have been.
It has to do with the transmission lines and how they're just kind of structured here between the two cities. And so Platte Canyon's an example that their connection comes into the system in a transmission line that we own. This has been set up since the 1970s. And so those districts have been literally designated by contract that long.
So if the, if the collection goes through the city, we're more likely to also set the rate for their treatment? Is that a fair way of putting it?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Can I just ask one more?
Please.
I'm sure naive question. XL recently sent my wife and I a piece of mail that they're going to replace our meter. Like, the old ones are outmoded now. A lot of this relies on, I assume, the accuracy of the meters. Are those, if they've been around for 50 years, still doing their, their jobs in terms of measuring accurately the amount of water that's coming into the collection system?
Well, we no longer have or own a water utility. And so having dealt with that professionally for 30 years, no water meter lasts forever. And so there is a replacement program for that. That is a piece of data that we currently don't manage. You're going to hear a discussion a little later here in the recommendations about how we work with the special districts in Denver Water to hopefully get new information and probably ask, you know, for the first time in quite a while, you know, what is the reliability of their data? How are they managing water meters, as an example for your question?
So when we say on these slides, for example, you know, per X gallons, the meter that's measuring that, we have confidence in its accuracy?
Yes. It would take a couple of study sessions to get through all of the nuances about water meters and how we, we gain confidence and the new technology, quite honestly, to read them. And so I, it's getting better. And at least in my view, that technology is making it more reliable.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for the city manager. So it was about three years ago when that letter was sent. And it was, it was concerning to all council at that time. Perhaps at a study session, you can just give us a brief update to all council members so they know the significance of the letter that you sent and what has been, do we have a new warm and fuzzy at this point? So not tonight, but at some point near future?
I think that's a great idea, Mayor, especially before we go into the joint meeting towards the end of July with Inglewood. I'd be more than happy to update our council on that.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Any other questions? No, back to you, Todd.
Thanks, almost done. Storm drainage, very similar setup to wastewater in terms of slides here. This shows us your capital program over the 10-year period with some grants funding anticipated in the first few years here. And these are some, this is part of the storm drainage master plan, these projects here that are listed. Here's the cash flow. Again, the when the bars are below the blue line, we are building up reserves and we are drawing down reserves. When the blue, I'm sorry, when the 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 bars are below the blue line, we are building up reserves. When the bars are above the blue line, we are drawing down reserves. So you can see here that some expenditures that come up in 2027 and '28, capital related mainly. And so we're drawing down some reserves in those years in order to pay for those with our our revenue adjustments and rates. And then we start building reserves again in '29 and '30 to set us up for the next 10-year period.
Todd, I do have a question.
Yes.
Going back one slide to the drain, utilities, the 10-year CIP.
Mm-hmm.
So we have the the light blue is the total capital improvements.
Yes.
And then the the grant funding is the dark. So what what's funding above the dark blue, then?
Rate revenue.
That's all rate and it's all covered?
Yes. The the revenue adjustments I'll show here in just a second are designed to recover, well, are designed to recover a portion of this capital program. I mentioned earlier on at the beginning that we have a $21.5 million program, but with the revenue adjustments we selected for the 10-year period, we're not quite funding everything through the study period. But this shows the total capital program. And in theory, anything above the blue bars there would be rate funded. We're not, we're not using state loans or any or revenue bonds to fund anything else. It's either grants or it's or it's rates, one of the two. So whatever's not funded by grants is going to be funded by rates.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come down here. So let's go to the far right column. This might help address. So when we looked at the capital program, we wanted to show that we had a $21.5 million program, but based on the revenue adjustments, we selected of the 40% and the 15%, followed by 3%. So that based on that, we'd be able to fund $16 million of that program over the study period. And that was simply because and one of these alternatives we looked at because we wanted, after the 40% and 15%, we wanted to maintain just inflationary increases. And plus, those projects can move, they can change in in cost and whatnot. So that was the reason we came up with this alternative. So unlike the wastewater where we're fully funding everything, this alternative we come up with funds almost all of the capital program, $16 million out of the 21.5. If we had larger revenue adjustments in '24 through '30, we could certainly fund the rest of the program. So this was just one of the alternatives we're presenting here.
Sorry, I think maybe you were you were just talking about an answer to this question, but maybe I didn't understand. Can you explain the rationale for the 40, 15, three structure? My, I guess I'm assuming that you want to front load the revenue increase so you can take out debt against it. Is that it just sounds, I just don't understand why you'd break it down.
I will try to answer part of that. I'll turn it over to Tiffany or Brent. When we initially started this study, the the city did have a a financial plan with revenue adjustments in it, and they wanted us to review it and provide some recommendations. But there had been some larger increases in the past 40% or something, and there were some projected ones that had been proposed. And so I'll turn it over to Tiffany as to the 40, 15 history.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. In 2020, we recommended a council just based on an internal rate study for the storm drainage, which we've never had one externally done in the past, so we welcomed this. But we did present a three-year phased-in to increase 40% in 2020, 2021, and 2022. We had a lot of capital, large capital improvements that we needed to address immediately. And in order to maintain an ending cash reserve and not go negative, we did propose that we do that in those first three years, but then also have some sort of leveling out after that.
Revenue requirement discussion again. We need to recover $2.3 million from our rates in 2022. We did pricing objectives again. Similar, if not the same, objectives for the stormwater. Here's the current structure. Developed properties for residential is a dollar per lot. So regardless of how much impervious area you have, you're going to pay the same price, much like on wastewater, regardless of how much billable volume is going to the treatment plant, you're paying the same price. And we have these other descriptions here, subdivided and undeveloped lots and undivided, and those are defined in the city's code. Multifamily, commercial, they do have an impervious area basis based on impervious acres and including a component for pervious acres as well. The subdivided, undeveloped, and unsubdivided and undeveloped are based on a per-lot basis. And again, those definitions are in the in the city codes. So the proposed rate structure is really simple. It's $19.54 per square foot of impervious area, regardless of whether you're commercial or residential, impervious area is impervious area. So we count up the impervious area on your lot, we multiply times 1954, and there's your bill. One alternative we discussed was, well, for for simplicity, because the there's some homogeneity with the smaller lots up to 20,000 square feet, that we have a flat fee for residential up to 20,000, a parcel of 20,000 square feet. And then after that, it is based off their individual impervious area. So that was one alternative we've we've discussed here. So that's what this example shows, what the bill would be under existing and proposed for residential. You can see that the existing bill is it's flat regardless of how much the what the parcel size. The proposed bill here is a little bit higher based on our cost of service analysis and that 40% revenue adjustment. But as you can see, as you get to 20,000 feet and greater, 20,000 square feet and greater, the bill does start to go up because it's based on individual impervious area. And here's commercial as well. Obviously, it's based on individual pervious area, so you're going to see that kind of stair step up. Here's where you compare based on other communities, based on 11,000 square foot lot, and that's about the average lot within the city, and about 4,500 square feet of impervious area. Littleton existing at $69 are proposed to be around $88. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of utilities are seeing significant increases in there. Stormwater fees, so we if we were to come back and look at this in 2022, I would imagine that Littleton might even be lower on the list here. Let's talk a little bit about the system development charges, the new fee that we city doesn't currently have. Same process as before, we have to value the facilities, and we have to look at the the total impervious square footage within the system. And that gives us a dollars per square foot of impervious area that you we can use to buy into the system. That applied to the impervious area of the of the parcel gives us our storm drainage fee. Again, one-time charge for new development. We can do that individually for each residential property based on the unique impervious area, or we can look at it as a flat fee based on the average, and that's what this $678 here shows. Or if we want to do it in on an individual impervious area basis, it's $151 per square foot of impervious, $151 per thousand square foot of impervious area. So similar process to the wastewater tap fee. We don't have collection or treatment to deal with, it's just storm drainage. So let's see how that compares to some other communities here. Like I said, there's not an existing Littleton fee, and compared to some other communities along I-25, we're kind of in the middle. You'll you'll notice that there's not as many utilities here because not as many utilities have storm drainage, system development charges, or impact fees, or or tap fees, whatever you want to call them. So it's not as many, but I imagine that's probably going to be coming for some of them based on the improvements and expansions they're needing to make.
This this might be a question for Keith. Is there any room in any of this to incentivize new development or even existing, existing development to reduce its impervious square footage? I'm just thinking, a lot of these new technologies that are that are really comparable to pavement but are pervious are coming online.
Actually, typically that typically yes, that would a lot of times be in the development code. You know, as we've talked about, how do we look at the, for example, the future of downtown? How do we how do we incorporate pervious concrete or pervious asphalt, for example? We don't have a current structure in place to incentivize that, but I can tell you as a staff, we've talked a lot about that. We 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 haven't had the opportunity to develop regulations or incentives to do that, but I certainly see that as a part of a part of our long-term environmental stewardship approach to how we bring that balance in in the community.
So you think it's it's something for the ULUC?
I think that's a typically an appropriate place for it, but they all tie together because you still have to pay the utility fee either way, under the way the statutes are written here. I don't want to talk as the attorney. I know he can reach me from there. So, you know, but they they have to be backfilled. But at the end of the day, a practice of creating more more pervious surfaces is beneficial on on many fronts, not just for runoff, but on many fronts. So yeah, that's something that we're we're certainly looking at as a staff and talking to community planning development about.
Okay, thanks.
Keith Reister, Public Works and Utilities Director, person that lowers the mic.
Back to you, Todd.
Final portion, probably one of the most important, billing practices. The city requested that we look into their current billing practices in terms of frequency of billing and and obviously the rate structures, which is one thing that we did look at is finding those more equitable rate structures based on pricing objectives. Raptelus does do a lot of work with helping utilities implement billing systems, especially with stormwater when they're converting over to GIS and and all that data for the first time. And what we have found that is a majority of time that the ability to bill monthly is is the best. Currently, the city bills annually. And there are some reasons why, and that's because of the the way the the billing data is handled. They have to collect a lot of information from the different districts and Denver Water. They have to sift through that, they have to compile it, aggregate it, and all that good stuff before they can send a bill out. So it's understandable that takes some time. So recognizing that, you know, it'd be great if the city could bill monthly, that is if they had all the they had complete control of all their billing data, which unfortunately they don't. But billing quarterly might be the next best answer. And it's important because it's one of the it's one of the last times customers have any communication with their utility. It allows them to adjust their budget, not have the rate shock by getting a one-time bill. And if all the bills go out at once, you might have a a volume of customer calls all at once from those those annual bills, so it'll help smooth that out. But one of the biggest things is just it improves the communication, gives them the opportunity to have some open dialogue with the city concerning their wastewater usage or storm drainage and whatnot. So they're doing a great job with the data they have and whatnot. And hopefully, with this rate structure and the new billing systems they might be getting, that switching to quarterly might might provide some benefit to the customer as well.
So I'm just going to jump in with another question. Sorry to ask so many. If council wants to move to monthly or quarterly billing as opposed to annual, is there a way for us to do, I guess I'll call it, value-added with the bill? What I mean is, if I remember my annual bill correctly, it's pretty bare bones. Here's the number. Denver Water, you know, when I get their bill, it's like, here's cool stuff about water, right? And I read the thing. You know, here's how to protect the stormwater, here's how to, you know, and actually communicate if that's the goal.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit about that, Keith and I. Being proactive, absolutely, we need to do that. We need to provide information to the customers, separating out collection versus treatment. We're going to have another component potentially related to billing. So yes, definitely.
And I'll hand the final slide over to Keith. Is he still here?
I get to close our slide. Thank you. So what we're recommending to council from a staff perspective is, we went through basically two blocks there. We went through the wastewater utility and the stormwater utility. And and the first thing I want to say related to, you know, the 11-year gap that we've had that Mark touched on, is that I feel that our our utilities are in a much better position today than they were just a few years ago in knowing what we have and the condition it's in and that the risk profile that goes with that. As as I shared with you, you know, over the last year, when we got done cammering the the stormwater utility, we had about 40% more pipe out there than we knew. And, you know, that stuff I heard stories about in the 80s, but not in my own personal career over the years. So so I feel much more confident about that today, that the the information that we base everything on is much, much better than it was even a couple of years ago. So what we're recommending is kind of two parts here, is that as we touched on early, an implementation of the fixed charge and the volume-based rate based on either the average winter cost or the actual on the wastewater. On the stormwater side, the impervious area per square foot, which is a good basis for, for example, what Scott mentioned earlier. One of the things we're recommending, though, which you kind of heard here at the end, is that what we would propose in the budget process this year is we continue with the existing rate structure into the 2022 budget process. And 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 we do the adjustments based on that. And then we adjust to the new rate structure January 1 of 2023. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Obviously, more time for us to communicate with the customers in general. Secondly, on the right-hand side of the screen, well, it's right-hand for me, it's right-hand for you, too. So on the right-hand side of the screen, there are some things that we still need to touch on. It was touched on in the presentation, we need to address the technology gap. And this is more so on the financial side of the House with the ERP system discussions you've been part of as well for us as a city. So we really want to make sure that we bridge that gap correctly. The second part of that is, you know, we talked about how do we get that information from our connector districts? We want to make sure that those protocols are in place. They're really frankly excited to work with us on this in a way. So so that's that's the good, one of the things we would like to make sure is assured. We also want to go through the process of defining the billing procedures, whether we keep that in-house, we upgrade our technology to do that, or we find a third party to do that for us. For example, many of the connector districts are billed by Denver Water. If you're in a connector district, your wastewater bill actually comes with your Denver Water bill. Denver Water has never really billed stormwater, so that's part of the discussion we've been having with them. There's also other third-party options out there as well. But we want to make sure we get to the right place for that. And to go to the the question that you asked, we think it's really important to have that communication mechanism on behalf of the city in your utility bill on a regular basis, just from a bigger picture standpoint as well. And then we want to make sure that we go through as we as we move from where we are to whatever new billing platform we're at, we want to make sure that we audit all our customer data in that process. One of the things that going through this process, and and I sent you an email recently through Mark, that kind of touched on the fact that when we got into this thing, we really were, our our data was in some different places, and we wanted, we want to make sure that that's correct before we move forward. Most utilities go through that on a pretty much every other year basis or so, you know, and you're going to have 1% to 2% variability, and you want to close that gap. That's for the benefit of us and more so the benefit of the customer, to make sure they're being billed correctly. So that's kind of the proposal we've we've put out there that we'd like to kind of bring forward. This would be our staff recommendation. You don't have to take any action tonight, but we would bring this forward during the budget process.
Yes, real quick, just get some clarity. We've mentioned, I think, two numbers about when the last rate study was conducted. So 2000, we said 11 years ago, but we also said 2006. Do you know if it's 15 years ago, or was it 11 years ago?
It was 2006 when the last outside rate study was completed. We've been doing internal ones based on the same model since then.
Okay.
But the last external was 2006 with a slight update, I think, in 2008.
Yeah, in that case, I just really want to applaud, I mean, it's it's in certain ways a difficult conversation, you know, we're talking about rate increases, but I really want to applaud city manager and staff for for bringing this to council. You know, one of the sort of light motifs of my tenure up here has been has been, well, we haven't done X for 20 years, right? And I I can't comment on the reasons why. But, you know, obviously, good governance requires that we attend to the things that need to be attended to. This is obviously critical. I really appreciate the opportunity for the conversation, so thank you all.
City manager?
Well, I I'm not sure I have too much more to add than that. I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. It is difficult. Maybe I'm counting on the city attorney for my math, maybe I shouldn't do that. It was, I guess it was 16 years, but. It was, I guess it was 16 years, but yeah, I think it is long overdue. And I think just to the financial well-being of these two utilities, absolutely key for our citizens here. We need to be more disciplined and regular about this work.
All right. Do we have anything else on this item? If not, you want to take a break? Yeah. If we have nothing else, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. It is 7:58. Let's come back at 8:08.
come back at 8:08. All right, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting for June 1, 2020. It is 8:08. Our next item on the agenda is ID number 21-066. It's a motion to approve an amendment to the city manager contract. So, council, as you know, we've had several, we recently had a, we conducted, we do annual interviews or evaluations every year. And for 2020, we were unable to do one for the city manager as well as city attorney. Since then, we have had, I think it was two executive sessions where we met with HR, where we reviewed salaries from other jurisdictions. We reviewed performance of our city manager. And we also did the same thing for our city attorney, but I'm going to keep them separate when it comes to a vote. We have to do that. And so, what else do I have here? So, that's really it, council. So, what we need to do tonight, we need to either approve or not approve an amendment to the city manager contract. And I know the numbers are, to some are shocking, but it is shocking to see what it costs when we have turnover and for our search that I think most of us up here have gone through. So, with that, council, open up for discussion. Councilmember Millman.
I was going to move to approve. I move to approve the amendment to the city manager's contract. Second?
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Grove. Council, do we have any more discussion? I see none. All right, I'm going to try to master this thing here. All right, so, we have a motion, if you could, it is to approve or not approve the proposed agreement. Okay, here we go. Did it pop up for you? Hang on. Here we go. Go ahead and vote if you will, please. Everybody has voted. Closing the vote.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. I'm going to move on to the next item, which is ID number 21-067. This is for the city attorney's agreement that we have. And it's the same thing as the last mentioned with the city attorney, where we do annual evaluations. We weren't able to do one in 2020, so this is for the 2021 performance evaluation. Again, we did have the two, we had the two executive sessions where HR did come to us with information and we discussed performances. And that's why we were able to go into executive sessions. So, with that, council.
Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the city attorney's contract. Second?
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Grove. Any more discussion? All right. Hang on just one second, please. All right, should show up, right? Let's see. All right, everybody has voted. Thank you.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you, council. Council, we are moving on to our last item of the night, and that is ID number 21-102. Council, we are going to fill the open at-large council position tonight that has been vacated by council, former council member Karina Elrod, who resigned her seat. I want to bring up that we did have eight amazing applicants that council interviewed. And the interviews are available now. You can watch them on YouTube via a link through the city website, is my understanding. Is that true, city clerk?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. And also let you know, I did call all applicants to thank them for throwing their name in the hat to fill the vacancy. Council, of course, can only select one person to fill the position. And I strongly do encourage that, those that weren't selected, that they keep with the city, stay with the city, to help our city to be what it is and to keep it going so strong and be a wonderful city that we have today. I want to do a special thank you also to Karina Elrod for her years of service with the city. She was very dedicated. She was always putting in work. And she worked full-time as well. And she came and did her job for representing the city every time we needed her. And with that, council, I would like to propose a motion. In accordance with Section 28 of the city charter, I move to appoint Mark Rednicki to fill the vacant at-large council seat and to serve the remainder of the term that will end in November of 2021. Second? We have a motion and a second with Councilmember Driscoll. Council, any more discussion? All right, we'll put it to a vote. All right, thank you, council.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Rednicki. City clerk?
At this time, we'd like Councilmember Rednicki and the judge to come up to the podium, please. Councilmember to be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye and say your name.
Aye, Mark Rednicki.
Solemnly affirm.
You solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and the ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
And the city of Littleton.
Of the city of Littleton.
Faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Councilmember at large.
Of councilmember at large. On which I'm about to enter.
Please take your seat, Mr. Rednicki. Oh, you got something to sign? Don't need to date it, okay? And we are going to have a bigger podium at some point.
Good. Congratulations again.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Judge, very much. And Mr. Rednicki, please have a seat. Oh, yeah. Pull it, pull it. Just sit down. Congratulations. All right. Council, under item number nine, ordinance is on second reading. We have none for tonight. The time now is 8:17 PM. We are adjourned.